Well, good morning to all of you. There we go, okay. We're glad that you're all able to join us this morning. I know we've got a very full agenda. We have some recognitions and we have some off-agenda speakers and a fairly full agenda, so we'll try to get right into that. My apologies for a little bit of a late start here, just trying to make sure we got all the outline provided for and hopefully get to the item that you're interested in here as the agenda moves along. So with that, again, I want to welcome you all to the November 7th, 2017 Meeting of Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. And I'll call the meeting to order and ask our clerk to call the role, establish a quorum, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and any announcements, and then we'll get right into the heart of the agenda, so. Flo?
Good morning. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, November 10th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices at this time.
Good. Okay, thank you, Flo. If you'd all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's see if there are any items to be continued from the agenda this morning.
Okay, so for your Consent Matters, Items 1 through 17. For Item Number 8, you're introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 16.8, 16.81, 16.83, 16.84, and 16.87 of the Sacramento County Code related to the payment of development fees through the statewide community infrastructure program. You're waiving full reading and continuing to November 14th for adoption. For Item Number 11, I do need a motion to drop this item, approve the Auburn Boulevard Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project.
Okay.
I'm sorry, did you say we're dropping the Auburn Boulevard item?
Yes, ma'am.
That's my understanding.
Item 11.
Thank you.
Okay, is that a motion?
Sure.
Okay. Moving seconded into Drop Item 11. I have no one signed to speak on Item 11, and nothing else, please vote.
Unanimous vote. And that concludes my notes for your Consent Matters.
Supervisor Natoli?
Yes.
I have one item that I need to just bring you up to date, is Item Number 2, which is, Flo, can you read that?
Item 2, Adoption of the 2018 Board of Supervisors Meeting Calendar.
What I want to spotlight is that there, through 2018, there could be a need to have a couple of night meetings. We do not know what time they will be. What I'm asking the board is to delegate some authority to my position to work with the incoming chair to schedule those meetings as need arises during the year.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I know that there's some land use matters that may warrant and generate a good deal of interest, and I think for large numbers of folks who may be interested, evening times are often a little easier for schedules and so forth. So, again, I'm fine with that, and we can work with their incoming chair and certainly use the county executive as we see those matters. Mather South is one of those, which may come to us in the middle part of the year, and I know there's another penny land use item that could come earlier than that, so, all right.
I would just say "if" the need arises, not "as" the need arises.
Understood.
Okay, well, I'm fine with "if" the need, but again, you know, again, recognizing that some of these matters will generate a good deal of interest, and I'm not just looking to have an evening meeting to have an evening meeting.
I heard you.
I know, I know you did, okay. Okay, then, let me turn to my colleagues, and Supervisor Frost, any item on consent calendar you wish to address? Okay, Supervisor Peters?
Uh, no.
No, any?
No.
Okay, okay. All right, Supervisor Kennedy?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, okay, so Item 12, we'll hold. Supervisor Serna? All right, and I had no items either, so we'll call Item 12, please.
Okay, Item 12, the Power Inn Road Sidewalk Improvements Contract.
Okay, Supervisor Kennedy?
A couple of questions. One is, it says the timeline is that it will be constructed in 2018. Is there anything a little more specific than that?
Mr. Schuman?
And by the way, I want to give out a loud hallelujah.
Good morning, I'm Dan Schuman with the Department of Transportation. We're planning to put that out to construction in the 2018 season. It will likely be a job that goes underway in the summer. The only concern that we will be tracking closely is a right-of-way acquisition. We do have right-of-way acquisitions, and that is, will be starting shortly, so if we run into any eminent domain actions, which at this point we're not anticipating, that could impact the schedule, but at this point, we're on track to be ready to go to bid in the summer on that.
And during the construction and the right-of-way discussion, is there any of those on the west side, are there any fences that are going to be involved in part of the?
I don't believe there's any impacts to those properties on the west side. We do have the right-of-way secured on that side, other than there may be some conform work with existing driveways, and this is mainly at the south end of the project. I think south of Lucreta, we might have some driveways that are going to be modified, and we just have to get rights of entry to do conforms. The bulk of the right-of-way is on the east side where we don't have any existing development.
Right.
The advantage of that is that it's already, the frontage along there is already encumbered by a smut easement, so we're not anticipating any complications in securing that for additional roadway and sidewalk easements.
Might I suggest, because it's not a very long area, it's not, it's fairly, you know, short, and, you know, when you're having these discussions about, I mean, it may be less expensive, if we're talking about eminent domain, to work with the neighbors to help repair, replace those fences. They might be more cooperative, and it would, you know, go a long way toward beautifying that area. So, something to think about, if we can identify some resources to actually rebuild the fences along the new sidewalk.
Yeah, we can certainly work with that as we go through the design process.
Okay, thank you.
Just, Dan, while you're there, just to piggyback on Supervisor Kennedy's comments, you know, some of these areas that have, you know, been developed for a number of decades where we had back-on wood fences, and now there are fairly major thoroughfares with a lot of traffic, obviously gonna, and I would second Mr. Kennedy's hallelujah, because I know this has been a long time in coming from a safety standpoint, and with the streetlight additions in those neighborhoods, and now the sidewalks along Power Inn. But it may be the opportunity, it may be the only opportunity to actually change out those wood fences, and again, not necessarily for acoustical purposes, but for aesthetics and a separation. You've got those mixed properties, some with front-on driveways and some with backyard fences, and, you know, those backyard fences deteriorate with age, and it seemed to me that a long Power Inn road, which is going to be, you know, a major thoroughfare, obviously multimodal now with the addition of the sidewalks, that to see about changing out where you have those older, much older wood fences in a lot of cases, and now you're going to have pedestrians ride up against them before you've got a roadside ditch, so it's been a little bit of a separation. Seemed to me it might be an opportunity to change that out with a, you know, a nice either split face or slumstone. It would add a little bit of cost to the project, but you're only going to go in there one time. Once those improvements are in, that's, you know, that's kind of the end of it. So I guess I would suggest that, and certainly compliment Mr. Kennedy's comments, that this would be the opportunity to do that, so.
Yeah, I think we can, we can kind of look at that with those types of projects in the future. We, of course, would have to incorporate those costs into our, you know, into grant applications or whatever source that we're seeking to construct these projects.
Okay. So you're going to take a look at that and work with Mr. Kennedy's office?
Yeah, we can look at that. We unfortunately hadn't included that, you know, in the grant application, so there, we'll have to explore what the?
Other funding sources that might be available.
And what funding sources we have available to do that work.
I guess I would just note on that, too, that, you know, even though a lot of these areas are relatively developed out, there are still some development fees that come in and so forth, and again, if you do a project, you're going to spend a million and six to do the safety project and the roadway improvements and the pedestrian improvements. The aesthetics aren't unimportant, and I think, you know, as you drive through those areas, you can see some of the things we've done over the years with center medians down Power Inn Road and obviously other improvements to the whole floor and town. It makes sense, at least from my perspective, and I'm supportive of, if you need to try to identify those sources, let's do it, do it. If you're going to do it, do it once and do it right, so. Okay, and I had no other items, so I have someone sign up on Item 21, which is a time matter, so we're okay, so. All right, then, with that, then, unless there's any other folks in the audience to address any items on the consent calendar, which I have no sign-up sheets, then we're going to take a motion on the consent calendar, so. We have a motion?
Move Consent.
Okay. Chair would second it? And if nothing further, then please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right, we have some presentations. I would just note for the folks that are here on the off-agenda, as we try to manage the agenda this morning, we'll try to get you in certainly before the morning session's over, but if we get a break in there, we'll give several off-agenda speakers, we'll call you forward and allow you to make a presentation as well, so. Okay, all right. Flo?
Okay, Item 18, Recognizing Randall Lee for 25 Years of Service.
Okay, Mr. Devine, good morning.
Good morning, Chair Natoli, Board Members, David Devine, Director of Personnel Services. And first, I didn't know Randy was such a draw. Crap. It's my pleasure today to recognize Randy for his 25 years of service to the County of Sacramento. Randy has a varied career here with the County of Sacramento, and he started his career in October of 1992 as a personal analyst in the medical services, medical systems department. And he was promoted to a senior personal analyst in 1995. In 1996, he transferred to regional parks, where he was there until 2001, serving in various HR capacities. And in 2001, Randy was promoted to a human resources manager at the airport. And at the airport at that time, Randy was very instrumental in your organizational development, and also very a big proponent of customer service, not only internally for the HR staff, but also externally for the customers who frequent the airport, and he was helping the import management at that time. And in 2007, when we consolidated, Randy became the HR manager in Department of Personal Services for the West Team, and the West Team services all the downtown departments as well as the board offices, so some of you may have had the opportunity to run into Randy then. Randy's duties, he leads the team in employee relations, he does lead administration and overall management of the team, and in 2012, he was promoted to HR Manager, Human Resource Manager III on the West Team. And then part of our job rotation in 2013, Randy was transferred to the Bradshaw Team that oversees all the public and infrastructure, general services, and all those departments. Randy's been very instrumental in the Department of Personnel Services. I want to thank him for his service, his leadership capabilities, his management skills, and his overall attitude towards customer service and providing the best customers to the county. So with this, I just want to thank Randy for his leadership, your professionalism, and your customer service for these 25 years on behalf of the county. And kind of an anecdotal note, in the Department of Personnel Services, over the last month, we've had three anniversaries with a total of 85 years of cumulative service credit here with this, with the county. So for those of you in the audience who are looking for a job eventually later on in your career, it's a great place to work, and I think that's evident by the amount of time that people spend here. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
I just want to say that it's been my honor to serve the country for 23 years as a naval officer, and now 25 years for Sacramento County, so you could say that I find that public service is the most noble thing you can do, so thank you for your recognition.
Thank you, Randall. Somebody got a photograph here? We got some of the camera? Thanks, Randall, for your service to our country and your service to the county, so congratulations. Okay, next.
Okay, Item 19, Presentation of Resolution Proclaiming November 6th through the 10th, 2017 as Human Services Professionals Appreciation Week.
Okay, and I believe you have Anna Lucia Carlson and maybe others that are eligibility supervisor and present, she is President of National Eligibility Workers Professional Association Towards Human Services, New Paths, and if there's others, I have a resolution on behalf of the board to present and offer them some opportunity to make some comments as well. Invite our others down, Anna, in a moment, introduce her colleagues, but as they're, come on down, it's all right. Don't be shy, you're going to be on camera, everybody's going to be looking at you from behind, so it's all right. Good morning. I'll let Anna and one of them introduce you. Well, you have a resolution that the board just approved a moment ago, and annually, we take an opportunity to recognize during the early part of November, our human service professionals, certainly those that work for the County of Sacramento, but those that work in public service throughout our county and our region. And I think we recognize that as represented and reflected in the folks that are here this morning on behalf of their colleagues, many hundreds, many thousands, who each day dedicate their time and efforts and talents to serving folks in our community. And they work hard to see to it that folks who come with a variety of needs and certainly challenges in their lives, or certainly questions and concerns, are served in a way that respects certainly their culture and their backgrounds, but also assist them in a way that hopefully helps them get to a better spot in their lives. And so our human service professionals, which is a very broad overarching designation, are people just like the folks that are here this morning, who, again, have gone to school and dedicated their, pretty parts of their careers to bringing the experience and training that's necessary to allow them to have that designation as a professional, and then they demonstrate it every day in the workplace in helping people, as I said, come with a variety of needs and challenges. And so today, we recognize that the week of November 6th, starting yesterday through the 10th, although we got to deal a full week, so that'll be through the, at least through the 12th, so, but recognizing that certainly the week in which we conduct our business is Human Services Professionals Appreciation Week here in Sacramento County, and we want to salute the efforts of those dedicated public servants who, whose performance and work really brings pride to all those involved, and certainly something we can be proud of as an organization. And we recognize the significant achievements and contributions that each of you makes as dedicated professionals, men and women who serve others to help improve the quality of life for the people that you serve, but also for our community. And so with a, you know, deep deal, with a greater amount of appreciation and thanks on behalf of this board, on behalf of a grateful community, we want to recognize this as a Human Services Professionals Appreciation Week in Sacramento County, offer our thanks, and we certainly commend you to your work that you do each and every day very competently and very well, and with a lot of caring and compassion. So Anna, I will present this to you on behalf of your colleagues here today and all of those that you represent, and offer our congratulations, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, everybody, and good morning. DHA's main objective is to always address our customers' needs on the first contact. New Paths on this Human Services Week and through all the year, through all the days of the years, our main objective is always to address the needs of our customers. We at New Paths represents all programs under the direction of Director Ann Edward.
You guys can introduce yourselves, tell us which department you work in or which section, so.
My name's Jose Hernandez, I work for the Department of Human Assistance, East Commerce.
My name is Yolanda Jackson, and I'm at ES for GA and CalFresh Medical.
I'm Lori Wilson, and I work for DHA. I'm in the CalWorks Service Center. My team that I supervise is the customer support for the new service center, and I work at Suzie Gaines Mitchell.
Good morning, I'm Danielle Walker, Human Services Specialist, Department of Human Assistance at the CalWorks Service Center. Assistance at the Cal Works Service Center.
Good morning, Elena Yakovleva, I'm a Human Services Specialist, works in a new setting, Call Center for Cal Works, and we provide range of public assistance for families with children, and it's kind of demanding job, and we try to do it our best.
Good morning, my name is Margaret Murphy, I'm a Senior Eligibility Specialist. I'm presently working in hearings compliance at the 19th Street Bureau, so I'm close, but it was not an easy job getting here this morning.
Well, invite me, Ann, and Gladys, and our other, our leadership team to come and join our professionals here, and we'll get a group picture and.
Can I just say something?
Oh, sure.
I just want to say to all of you, you do an amazing job every day, and the work is really demanding, and you do it with care and compassion and integrity, and I really appreciate all that each and every one of you here and back at the department do, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much, and appreciate the folks being here today and taking the trouble to get here, all the way from 19th Street even, so. Okay. With that, then, if we'll go ahead and we have our next presentations, I believe, so.
Item 20 is the presentation in recognition of the 2017 Heroes of Human Service Award recipients.
Okay, well, this is an annual recognition as well, and I know that Sherri Heller is coming forward, and she'll be the mistress of ceremonies for us this morning and does a tremendous job, but just note that those of you that are in the audience this morning that'll be recognized, but also those that are here in support of, we appreciate all that you do, and we're going to get a chance in just a moment to recognize you, you know, individually, but collectively, we say thanks, again, because you're part of the team that helps make this community a good place to live, and we serve, again, people with tremendous challenges in some cases, but makes for a better quality of life. So, with that, Dr. Heller, I'm going to turn it over to you and allow you to get us started.
Thank you, Mr. Natoli. You said that thing about everybody looking at you from behind. So I decided it would be the board members. With respect, I hope that's okay. So, let me, this is a great day, right? This is a happy thing, we're honoring our volunteers. I want to begin by recognizing the members of the Human Services Coordinating Council, itself a group of volunteers, who all year long advise my human services programs and the, especially the Board of Supervisors, on human services issues, and they're the ones who ran this nomination process, put the awards program together, donated and set up all that food that you saw outside in the hallway, right? That wasn't the taxpayers, that was the Human Services Coordinating Council, and we have several members, can you just wave or something, the people who are here from the Human Services Coord. Now, I'm going to tell you the rules of how this is going to go, so that it's smoothly and everybody gets to enjoy the event and it doesn't take all morning, okay? You ready? You should nod, or I'll just keep explaining them. All right, here, what's going to happen is I'm going to say the name of the person or persons being honored, and then all you in the crowd, don't do anything. Don't clap yet, all right? This is how we're going to make it go efficiently. And then I'm going to say nice things about why we're recognizing the volunteers, and meanwhile, while I'm saying those nice things, the volunteer is walking, right, walking, walking, walking to the podium, and the supervisor from the district where the person is being honored from will also be walking, 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 and they meet at the podium, isn't that nice? Okay? Then everybody claps. Everybody got the picture? Then the supervisor will have an opportunity to say why the person is worthy of being recognized and make a few remarks, and then somebody representing the honorees will have the opportunity to make a few remarks. Now, here's the trick, you put your mouth in between the two microphones, okay? If you go like this, it doesn't work as well. Everybody got that? This is my favorite part, is when the honoree gets to make remarks. After that, first of all, they shouldn't go on for too long, right? Then the honoree and the supervisor go around the podium like this, for the grip and grin. Grip and grin, everybody wants to take pictures can be on the stairway, then we move on to the next one. Now, there's an exception to the rules for the Del Campo people. It's not that I don't think you can follow the rules, it's just that I don't really think when you all come down here, you can do it quietly while I'm talking. So, in the case of Del Campo, I'm going to say all the nice things, and then you get up, right? And when you do the grip and grin, it won't be in front of the podium, it'll be back here so we can fit you all. All right? And you go back and tell everybody at school that you were the ones who were given permission not to follow the rules. All right, we are getting underway, we're going in district order to begin with District One, and we are first honoring Steve Hill, who's walking, and Mr. Serta's walking, but we're all being quiet while I tell you about him. Steve Hill served Sacramento County for 35 years as a deputy sheriff, but that's not why we're honoring him. After the end of that service, after retirement, he became involved with the Search and Rescue Unit, which is a nonprofit organization of skilled volunteers who look for missing persons. They're trained, they do it on foot, on horseback, canine searches, for 14 years and over 4,700 volunteer hours. This gentleman, Steve, has cared for the volunteers, guided them, provided them with the technical tools they need, whether it's maps, compass search techniques. He recently took a vacation for the first time in years, and while on vacation, he coordinated the search for an elderly Elk Grove man who was missing for over 24 hours. That level of skill, volunteer energy, guidance, and caring is more than public service. We think it's worthy of recognition, and we're eager to hear from him. Please join me in congratulating him.
So, for as organized as Dr. Heller is, she didn't forewarn me that she's going to steal all the thunder and recite all the accolades, well-deserved accolades that Mr. Hill deserves as one of our heroes, 2017 Heroes of Human Services. Dr. Heller mentioned some of the activities that Mr. Hill is involved with in terms of the very important job of search and rescue and his history doing that. I think, given the unfortunate circumstances of the last few months globally, we've seen hurricanes and other natural disasters, which really underscore the need for the kind of volunteer activity that people like Steve Hill commit themselves to when it comes to the important job of making sure that injured are found, and that we, as a local government, continue to provide the resources necessary so that he can continue to do the great job that he does. So, it is my honor this morning on behalf of District One to present Steve Hill this resolution acknowledging him as a 2017 Hero of Human Services.
I'm very honored to get this award. We have a great group, the whole back row there is all my search and rescue team, they're here. Why, I don't know, but they're here. I think the reason I've stayed with this so long, I've been with the Sheriff's Department over 40 years, and the reason I stay with it so long is because of those people. Thank you very much.
Terrific. The next person we are honoring is from District Two, so if Mr. Kennedy could join us at the podium. We are honoring Juan Jonathan Maldonado, and the nomination comes from La Familia Counseling Center. Juan is a young man with special needs who's currently 23 years old and works at the elementary school as a yard attendant, but when he was about 12, his mom came to La Familia looking for assistance, and Juan started out by participating in a whole lot of community events, karate classes, he volunteered to assist the sensei at karate, he comes in early, sets up the table, stays late, cleans up, he just helps out wherever he's needed. He's in the out-of-school program where he worked as a stocker at the Mercado Local Market, where he gained work experience, volunteered all summer long at the summer lunch program, and is active in all of the volunteer community events, health and safety fairs, resource fairs, the Latino Parade, Halloween, Christmas. I think what characterizes him, always the first to arrive, always the last to leave. The people at La Familia estimate that in the 12 years he's been volunteering there, he's volunteered over 10,000 hours and serves as a role model for all of the people at La Familia. Please join me and welcome him.
On behalf of District Two and the Board of Supervisors, I am extremely proud to be presenting this to Juan. La Familia is, and I don't make much of a secret of it, probably my favorite organization in Sacramento County, and it's only as good as it is because of people like Juan, and the work that you do. I mean, just hearing about it, reading about it, I'm exhausted. So, you know, thank you for your commitment to La Familia, to District Two, to Sacramento County, and more importantly, the people that are served by that great organization, so thank you very much.
Thank you for everything you are able to do.
We have two volunteers who we're honoring in District Three, but it turns out that I'm the one who didn't follow the rules, and the remarks I've been given duplicate the ones the supervisor have been given. So, here's what's going to happen, I'll say the name, the person can walk and you can clap, and I won't say anything about why we're honoring them, we'll just let the supervisors do it, okay? I'm just trying to be resourceful and correct the error here. So, the first person we're honoring from Supervisor Peter's district is Dr. Zoe Gore, and she'll tell you about it.
Hi, Zoe, Dr. Gore. Dr. Gore is a pediatrician for Kaiser Permanente and saw firsthand that many of her patients did not have adequate access to fresh fruits and vegetables. This is kind of a food day, because Del Campo's coming next. 2015, she and her husband, Richard, wanted to make a difference and provide fruits and vegetables to the community, so they purchased a food truck and created the Reverse Food Truck, in which they collected nutritious food from shoppers and vendors at farmers' market and donate all of their produce to food banks, pantries, and underserved schools. Their slogan is, "We don't make food, we take food." And they park the truck at farmers' markets and enables both the farmers to donate as well as the customers by purchasing produce directly from the farmers and donating to the community, which supports the farm-to-fork movement. Since 2014, they've collected over 10,000 pounds of produce, and they use local teen volunteers to help collect and distribute food, which teaches them values of giving back to the community and why fresh produce is so important for health. Some of the fruits and vegetables have been donated to the John Stell Elementary School, where 100% of the children are eligible for free or reduced-priced lunches. So, it's my pleasure to recognize Dr. Zoe Gore as a 2017 Hero of Human Services, and formally thank you for your dedication for providing fresh produce to the community.
Thank you. I do want to share this award with my husband, who, when I came home repeatedly talking about the problem in the community, said, "Why don't we try this?" So, thank you to my husband, Richard, and also to Chris Calvin, the CEO of the American Academy Pediatrics and President of the American Academy Pediatrics California Foundation, who was the grant owner, and also to Rob Azaveto and Jen from Community Benefits, who gave us the grant to be able to do the truck, so thank you.
Mr. Dr. Gore, would you come down and get your picture taken, too?
Truck-driving man, okay.
Now, I don't remember your instructions on this. I'm really confused, but I'd like to ask all the people, the young people from Del Campo, to come down and gather back here. This is a big award.
Go Cougars.
So, Kids Helping Kids Sacramento was founded in 2012, it's a 501(c)(3) run entirely by student volunteers at Del Campo High School. During the organization's short time of operations, the students have raised $500,000 and expended over 40,000 volunteer hours supporting various initiatives to help youth in the community be successful. The organization has 45 students on its roster and is led by seven Del Campo High School students, who are responsible for all aspects of the organization, including planning activities, coordinating student volunteers, fundraising, and recruiting and training new students to replace those graduate, which is really important, so you don't lose all that institutional knowledge, right? So, each week, these students volunteer at Carmichael Elementary School and partner with fifth, first-grade students to create garden boxes to plant vegetables, and help fifth-grade students on art projects, and these high school students also provide tutoring to kindergartners. Kids Helping Kids also sponsors graduating foster kids with a $300 shopping spree for dorm supplies, a laptop computer, plus provide guidance for selecting college classes, and support on how to finance college. These students also assist families of pediatric cancer patients with expenses. They provide all of this assistance by holding three fundraising events each year. So, it is my real pleasure to recognize Kids Helping Kids Sacramento as a 2017 Hero of Human Services, and to formally thank each of these students' dedication and commitment to helping our children and our community. I think they deserve a standing ovation myself. And we have a speaker.
Hi, I just wanted to say that we are so happy that we've been able to be honored with this award. There's 45 people standing behind me, and we love what we do every single day, it's such a joy to get to work in our community and change the Sacramento community and hopefully the world, so thank you.
It's a good start.
Thank you.
Okay, cameras ready? Chins up, smiling. Skipper had a report on this for class?
Isn't this heartening? Doesn't this cheer you up? Great event. We learned last night that the next recipient from District Four has been hospitalized and is about to undergo surgery, and so she can't be here today, and I'm not sure whether her daughter or the community member that nominated her, both, everybody's going to be here, terrific. So, we want to honor Lottie Reed, and I won't say much about the Golden Valley Quilters Guild, we'll leave that to Supervisor Frost and the people who are going to speak about why she was nominated.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like at this time to invite Mona Laird, Lottie's daughter, and Forrest and Sue Allen to come on down. Forrest and Sue were the community nominees for Lottie. And I'm so sorry that your mom's in the hospital.
Good news, she won't have the surgery.
Oh, good, okay. Okay, great. Well, Heroes of Human Service Awards is to recognize those who have touched the lives of others in our communities, who have dedicated their lives to service for others. And in District 4, we have so many people like that that are deserving of being honored in this way, but it's my great pleasure to recognize and honor Lottie Reed, who is truly a human hero of human services. Lottie was born in Germany. She learned to knit and sew while attending Catholic school. She married Paul H. Marshall in 1948 and came to the United States in 1952. They settled in Citrus Heights in 1961, where her husband retired from the Army, and they raised six children. Lottie joined her first quilting guild in 2002. And as a community service coordinator for the Golden Valley Quilter Guild, she distributed in this past year over 700 completed quilts to local agencies such as nursing homes, VA hospitals, Mary House, Weave, Harmony House, and the Citrus Heights Police Department. Lottie sews quilts for the Mercy San Juan Hospice Program, Mercy Quilters, and completes, on average, 25 quilts for hospice each year. All year, she sews, she sews makeup bags, microwave bowl holders, mini purses, snap bags, table runners, coasters, et cetera, for the Mercy Quilters Annual October Craft Fair. Last year, the proceeds raised over $7,000. For Mary House and loaves and fishes, she shaves hats and also sews felt hats. She makes large quilt bags that are given to loaves and fishes for shower bags, and smaller ones that are given to the nursing homes for wheelchairs and walkers. She also makes children's quilts and sundries. This past year, Lottie made and donated to Sutter Hospital four quilts that were auctioned for the Breast Cancer Society. She donates pillowcases and quilts to Volunteers of America. Citrus Heights Police Department gives 100 children's quilts for use in the police cars. Lottie completed 70 of those. And I remember, over time, over years, Lottie's been helping our Citrus Heights Police and our communities. She also makes children quilts, pillowcases, sundries for Wellsprings. Lottie's quilted over 30 years and touched the lives of young and old, sick, poor, hungry, and hopeless. Lottie was nominated by Forrest and Sue Allen, and it is my great pleasure to recognize Lottie as recipient of the 2017 Hero of Human Services, and Mona, you should be so proud.
Sorry, did I cut you off?
No, no, we're good. Go for it.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank Forrest and his lovely wife for nominating my mother for these awards. My mother's a very humble woman. She doesn't like to be recognized for the stuff she does, but I feel it's a great honor for our family, and for my mother, who spent so many years coming from Germany, not speaking English when she first got here, having to learn everything on her own. And my dad was in the service the whole time, so there's a lot of times she had to, while he was gone in Korea and a couple of other places, that she was the sole responsibility for our family. I'm the oldest of six. I look the most like her, so you're actually seeing my mom.[921.32][921.32][laughter] Because there's only 17 years between us, so as I turn 70 next week, I get to remind her that, you know, she's an old lady. So, but she's very independent, she's a very strong woman, and she does a lot of things just because she feels that there's a need. And all the services that she sews her quilts for, she does with a lot of love, and she takes a lot of time to pick out things, especially for the children's wards. She really has an affinity for the children's wards and the homeless, and all these things that she does. So, thank you very much for recognizing her, and thank you, Forrest. And what's her name there?
Sue.
Sue. And Sue, 'cause you know, 'cause I'm almost 70 and I have these wine farts, so. But anyway, thank you very much.[977.63][977.63][applause]
Mr. Natoli is en route to the podium. We have two honorees from his district, and the first is Wayne D. Harmer. Is it Hamer or Harmer? I want to make sure I say it right. Harmer, Wayne Harmer. Could you join Mr. Natoli at the podium, and he'll say why you're being honored?
Well, like my colleagues, I'm very pleased to be able to stand before this audience and certainly to express our thanks to all of our heroes of human service, but certainly to recognize some of those from District 5. The gentleman standing next to me, I think, actually, the second-time recipient, or you were at least nominated.
About four years.
About four years ago. And what this gentleman has contributed to the community, he's resident at Ranch Cordova, longtime resident. He's a veteran who certainly served his country, and then, upon leaving active service, settled in Ranch Cordova about a dozen years ago. Yeah. And since that time, has left a tremendous imprint on the community, not unlike many of you. He has found a real place in serving and giving back to his community. The list is fairly lengthy, so I won't read all of them, but when you think about some of the activities, certainly in Ranch Cordova, but in the broader community, for example, the California Capitol Air Show, the annual festivities, the lighting of the Christmas tree, and the Cordova community program that they put together, the International Festival, movies in the park, Friday Night Concerts, and of course, the grand celebration, the Independence Day celebration in Ranch Cordova, 4th of July. This gentleman, though, is not just an attendee, or showing up in an hour or two in advance to see what needed to be finished off. He's there from the very beginning, on the planning, the setup, the conduct of the activities, and helping out wherever he can, providing a helping hand, and then there's, at the end, to tear down, to pack up, and to get ready for the next event. And so as the seasons come and go, and celebrations occur in the community, Wayne is ever-present. So whether it's in the summertime, or Halloween, or Christmas, or Thanksgiving, or festivities throughout the course of a year, the 4th of July, as I mentioned, he is there, serving people of all ages, from all walks of life, and he does it out of a generosity of heart and certainly a commitment to his fellow human beings in his community. And so, he's never daunted by any of the challenges, and certainly I know that probably goes home and just collapses in some days with all of the work that he does, but he does it because he loves his community, he loves the people in his community, and he's always there to volunteer and help out whenever and wherever needed. And so it's my pleasure to recognize Wayne Harmer, and certainly his family, I don't know, is your wife here today with you? Okay. And his family for, you know, giving of their time and effort, and obviously the sacrifices they make, and when he's not around to help out at home, but he's there helping the community in so many ways. So Wayne, I'm pleased to recognize you as one of the Heroes of Human Services Award winners for District 5. Congratulations.
Thank you.[1174.83][1174.83][applause] I love to call myself a professional volunteer, especially for the Cordova Community Council, City of Ranch Cordova, the California Capitol Air Show. I do not ever see that there's gonna be a need, or never gonna have a need for volunteers. Volunteers will be endless, so will I. I will continue until I start volunteering in a wheelchair and pushing it. So, I'm gonna continue.
I don't know if you noticed how Wayne is attired, but it says on the nomination form, I think he bleeds red, white, and blue.[1238.26][1238.26][laughter] Very patriotic. All right. Mr. Natoli is going to describe for you the Respite Club and what "CLUB" stands for. We are honoring today leaders of this group: Jerry Schur, Kay Richardson, Nancy Carr, and Rita Brown can't be here, but we invite her acceptors to be here. So if you folks could come down while Mr. Natoli describes your work.
Thank you. Thank you, Jerry. When you have a club, you gotta recognize the club members, and this is reflective of the group and other volunteers, so as they work their way down here to join me, I would just describe that the Respite Club, and "CLUB" in this case stands for caring, laughing, understanding, and belonging. And this group of very dedicated volunteers, individuals, work most weeks, several days during the week, at the Cordova Neighborhood Church in Ranch Cordova, where they offer the opportunity for caregivers to get a respite from their caregiving for their loved ones. And so it's a drop-in center where folks that either have challenges due to age or stroke, dementia, are able to come and be in an environment where these ladies and others provide an opportunity for them to be nurtured, to be in a safe environment, to have the opportunity to share with one another in some activities there that are wholesome and helpful to them, provided in a way that provides, you know, certainly respectfully, a lot of kindness and caring obviously goes into it. And it allows the caregivers, oftentimes a spouse or a family member, but others as well, some much-needed time to get a respite, to do some of the things that may take for granted, to go to the store, to get their hair done, to maybe go home and take a nap for a few hours. But all that being said, it's done in a way that then allows the family member to continue to be in an independent environment with the loving support of their family, but also then to have that needed break. And so the Respite Club does some very, very important work, and I know that each of the people who participate in the program receive, again, a very loving and nurturing environment. And the folks that are here today, Kay Richardson, and Jerry Schur, and Nancy Carr, and representatives who also are kind of the leaders in the program for Rita, are gonna receive on behalf of Rita Brown. But these, again, ladies and others who volunteer on a regular basis, to give themselves, to allow for that needed respite, also to provide the ability for folks to live in their home and to remain in the community. And so with that, I'm particularly pleased to recognize Nancy, Jerry, and Kay, and then Rita as well. I know Rebecca Growlechuk is gonna receive for her, so. And so these, this is our Respite Club representatives, and I don't know if Rebecca or one of the other ladies, all of you are welcome to offer a comment if you'd like to, so.
Well, I feel, I feel real honored that you did this for our group, and we really appreciate it, and we really love our work, and all our people work together, and we keep our senior folks happy, and it gives our, you know, the participants' families a time to be by, to do what they have to do, and our people are well cared for, and we love all our seniors.
There's quite a difference between Mr. Natoli and I.[1477.13][1477.13][laughter] This has been a delightful thing to do, and I'm so happy that I can do this with these people. They are the most wonderful people, and you know that before the disease took them over, that they were just so much fun to be around. Just delightful. Thank you for everything. Thank you, darling.
I didn't know we were gonna have to speak today. I have to say upon what Nancy said, that the club is a, it's an honor to be a volunteer there, and I enjoy it very much. The people are very inspirational, and they have a lot of problems, but they're still very inspirational, and it's very enjoyable to be there. And I appreciate the honor of this.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Growlechuk. I'm the Assistant Program Coordinator for the Respite Club, and I'm here to receive the award for the one volunteer who could not make it. Just to really be clear, we are a nonprofit drop-in day program for people who are struggling with dementia. Just because you have dementia doesn't mean that you're not still a whole person who enjoys life and who can laugh and have fun. That's what the club part of our program is. We are mental, social, and physical stimulation. The respite part, as Supervisor Natoli said, is for the caregivers. If any of you have ever cared for a loved one 24/7, you know how important it is to have time for yourself. So we invite you to check us out, to come see us. If you have a friend or a loved one, or you're just interested in volunteering, that would be great to have you come. The last thing I want to say is, as most tiny little nonprofits, we operate on a shoestring. If not for our volunteers, as represented by these three women, we would not exist, for those with dementia and for the caregivers.
Thank you all so much for being here to honor the volunteers today. I want to wrap up with one more word of thanks for the members of the Human Services Coordinating Council who put this whole program together, and I want to take just a moment to honor our own county staff, Jennifer Fong, Jerry Thompson, and Gladys Poloney is here, too, who provided staff support for this whole event and for the Human Services Coordinating Council generally. My favorite part, I don't know, because of where I get to sit during this ceremony, I got to watch all of your faces, and I really have, I was touched by how attentive everybody was and how moved you were by the other volunteer stories. What a, what a source of pride to live in a community like Sacramento County, where we have so many neighbors helping neighbors. Thanks for the privilege of talking about these fine folks today, and I turn the podium back over to Mr. Chairman Natoli.
Good. Well, thank you, Dr. Heller, for your work.[1719.01][1719.01][applause] Okay, well, the room is aglow, certainly with all the goodwill and good work that's been recognized here today, and with that, we have a reception, as Dr. Heller pointed out, and I want to thank the Human Services Coordinating Council one more time, certainly for being here today, but also for all your efforts to work with our staff to make sure this program comes off the way it does each and every year. And so with that, we're gonna take a brief recess to join all of you in the lobby for refreshments, and again, our thanks for all your good work, you're angels among us. So we'll take a brief recess.[1755.01][1755.01][applause] 10:40, 10:50 probably. 10:50, yeah, give us a few minutes.